Organizational and regular town council meeting to order. Madam clerk, may I please have a word call?
Thank you.
President via Zoom.
I'm here.
Chairman or?
Here.
Councilwoman Wong here. And Councilwoman Higgin.
Here.
Now, if you could please all stand and remove your hats. You're understanding pledge. I pledge allegiance.
Allegiance. States of America and to the Republic.
Into this. Justice agenda.
No, sir.
Seeking approval of the minutes for the October twenty-third, twenty twenty-four and October thirtieth, twenty twenty-four executive sessions, November fourth, twenty twenty. Twenty-four should be special council meeting.
So move.
Motion made by Council McGowan, second by Council Danforth, and council discussion. Public. Back to the council, all, oh, we have to lose by vote, yes. Council Mackin. How do you vote?
Me, I will, yeah. You're looking at a boss. Yes.
Council Pellet here.
Aye.
Council Danforth.
Aye.
Council McGowan.
Aye.
Chairman Dorr, aye. Council Higgins.
Aye.
Unanimous, six oh. Alrighty, seeing that there's company business, ready to new business. Council Danforth, you can read order, ordinance two dash twenty twenty-four.
The chairman of order ordinance number two dash twenty-four, providing for amendment to chapter seventy-five, general assistant. Code of the town of Millinocket in compliance with title twenty-two, M R S A, four three zero five, question four. Be it ordained by the town council in Millinocket and town council assembled, the Millinocket code, chapter seventy-five, appendices A through H be amended for the attached appendix. It is for the order that this ordinance taken back thirty days after it was adopted.
Okay.
Motion made by Council Danforth, second by Council Pellet here. This is procedural, we do this every year. Um, just goes ahead, madam clerk, could you explain this a little bit more in depth?
Sure. Glory, G A, brings us to the, to the public. For any, um, propositions or concerns, right like that, first public hearing needs to be, um, presented before the second public hearing for passing. Um, and this is just updates to the A through H denoms, which I'll, uh, done. So there's no vote today, you're just hearing the public and council.
Any, uh, council discussion on the order? For the public? Okay, since this is the first hearing, there is no vote, so we will move on from there. Council McGowan, can I please get you to read order two forty-eight dash twenty twenty-four?
Yes, order number two forty-eight dash twenty twenty-four, providing for execution of the town warrant for November eleventh, twenty twenty-four. It is ordered that the town warrant for November eleventh, twenty twenty-four in the amount of four hundred and sixteen thousand, five hundred and twenty-six dollars and four cents is hereby approved.
Second.
Motion made by Council McGowan, second by Council Pellet here, Council McGowan, what do we got there?
Uh, we got a few big ones.
Thank you.
Uh, twelve thousand, four hundred and sixteen dollars and eighteen cents to Ascend Aviation Group, that's for aviation fuel. Uh, four thousand, five hundred and forty-four to Alon Financial Services, that is the town credit card. Thirty-eight thousand, three seventy-five to Fire Tech and Safety, that's for fire equipment. Forty-eight thousand, six thirty-five, sixty-five to Foyle Tanner and Associates. That's for the, uh, engineers on, of the airport Lukeens Drive. Two hundred and three thousand, three hundred and five dollars to Lou Silver Incorporated. That's the final payment on the Pines Culvert project. Eight thousand, four hundred and thirty-five dollars to Emmy O'Brien and Sons, that is the new swing set. For Katatin Pride Heart. Fifteen thousand, four twenty-eight, seventeen to Municipal Waste Solutions, that's disposal fees. Nine thousand, six hundred and thirty-five dollars to Russell Johnson, that's legal fees. Right, that's up, that's it.
Yes, thank you. Any council discretion on the order?
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, Mr. Manager.
I'd just like to point out that, that, for the swing set check, um, that was covered under our insurance. So, uh, we did receive a check from the insurance company offsetting that balance, uh, beyond our thousand dollar deductible. That really only cost us a thousand dollars.
Thank you very much. Council Pellet here, you're showing me, uh, I believe that was voided, council. Uh, the, was the forty thousand?
It's on the other side.
Fifty-two, fifty-two. Was that, was that a void?
Yeah, there was a void, but then there is, it was reprocessed from the last day.
Okay, so it is, it is.
It is on there, yeah.
It's on there?
Yeah.
Forty thousand, sixty, fifty-two cents for runway match on.
Yes. Yep.
Yeah, thank you, council, I was.
Anyone else in the council? Down to the. Back to the council, Council Higgins, how do you vote?
Aye.
Mackin?
Aye.
Council Pellet here.
Aye.
Council Danforth.
Aye.
Council McGowan.
Aye.
Chairman Dorr, aye, it's unanimous, six oh. Uh, Council Pellet here, can I please get you to read two forty-nine dash twenty twenty-four?
Order, two forty-nine dash twenty twenty-four, providing for execution of the wastewater warrant for November eleventh, twenty twenty-four. It is ordered that the wastewater warrant for November eleventh, twenty twenty-four in the amount of five thousand, nine hundred and seventy-seven dollars and ninety-two cents is hereby approved.
Second.
Motion made by Council Pellet here, second by Council McGowan, any other?
Uh, Oliver, Oliver Associates for two thousand, nine hundred and thirty-four dollars, and that's on the main compensation upgrade.
Thank you. Uh, any council discussion on the order? Down to the public. Being back to the council, uh, Council Higgins, how do you vote?
Aye.
Aye. Council Pellet here.
Aye.
Council Danforth. Council McGowan.
Aye.
Chairman Dorr, aye, it's unanimous, six oh, thank you. Council Mackin, can I please get you to read order two fifty dash twenty twenty-four?
Order number two. I know, right, thank. Love you too, Mike.
Love to see you go.
Order number two fifty dash twenty twenty-four, for ratification of the November fifth, twenty twenty-four municipal election results. It is ordered that the results of the November fifth, twenty twenty-four election, municipal election are hereby ratified as follows. Total ballots cast, two thousand, three hundred and ninety-three. Town council, for three years, Matthew Bradden, sixteen, I, what, one thousand, six hundred and three. Ken Barcray, three, three hundred and forty-one, Kami McLaughlin, one thousand, five hundred and twenty-six, Zelda Stratton, four hundred and sixty-one, and blanks, eight hundred and fifty-five. School board for one year, Rachel Seer, one thousand, seven hundred and thirty-six, Warren Stewart, five hundred and twenty-one, and blanks, one third and six. Warden, return of votes cast and clerk's certification attached.
Second.
Second. Motion made, uh, motion made by Council Mackin, second by Council Pellet here. Uh, council, uh, we have, the, the school board was a, uh, a three-year term, but we want to see, just wanted to clarify that. Uh, any house, any council discussion on the order? Council Danforth.
I just, I print out, pass, you, you, passed, go ballot. It's a big election.
Thank you. It is quite a, it's impressive, I wish every election was that big. Any other council?
Well, it's lost me that there's eight hundred and fifty-five blanks.
Yeah.
That nobody, if, if they're gonna go vote. Yeah. Be a part of the whole thing, I mean, that's what. It just upsets.
I understand.
That, it was that many.
It, it is, it is discouraging times, I understand, but, you know, that's why you have that little cubicle and nobody can see what you're doing, so you can do whatever you want in there, well, not everything, but you do, you can vote for however you want in there, and, uh, that is our democratic system, so it is, it is a secret ballot, and people don't wanna vote for somebody, they don't have to. Any, uh, going down to the town, down to the public, anybody always wanting to comment on the? Name none, back to council, all those in favor of ratification of order two fifty, twenty twenty-four, Council Higgins?
Yeah, I, I'd just like to say something, my goodness, the chair. I would like to thank everyone that did run. I really appreciate it.
That being said, now, how would you vote?
Aye.
Mackin?
Aye.
Council Pellet here.
Aye.
Council Danforth?
Aye.
Council McGowan?
Aye.
Chairman Dorr is aye, it's unanimous. Yeah, votes have been ratified. Oh, yeah, okay. Uh. Council Danforth, can I get you to read? Uh, resolve number eight?
Resolve number eight.
Ten.
Number ten.
Oh, eight on there, ten on there, let's split the difference, this is resolve number nine.
It's ten. We're gonna send it as well. Absolutely, my pleasure. Proclamation honoring Michael Mador for his public service to the town of Millinocket. Whereas Michael has been a steadfast community volunteer as well as a dedicated public servant to the town of Millinocket. And whereas Michael has served on the Millinocket Town Council for five terms totaling fifteen years. First elected in two thousand and eight, Michael took one year off before rejoining the ranks as an elected official again in twenty twenty-one, demonstrating his dedication and desire to be an integral part of revitalizing the town. During his tenure on the town council, he served as council chair in twenty sixteen, twenty seventeen council session, and again in the twenty twenty-three to twenty twenty-four council session. And whereas Michael applied his skills and historical knowledge in many areas over his years on the council, included, including but not limiting to economic development, local and regional recreation, youth and school initiatives, with special attention to the veterans' park memorial. Whereas Michael has fostered and strengthened many relationships between the town of Millinocket and outside organizations, and has been the leading voice towards the efforts of Arkatana, Millinocket's economic development partner. And whereas Michael cares deeply for the well-being of his community, and he has given, given much of his time assisting community efforts, and whereas Michael's gift to gab is a polished skill which he used liberally, he'll be remembered fondly for the following praises which he used ever so abundantly, and so on, and so forth, and what have you. And like I say, and I'd like to go ahead, and, yeah, therefore it be resolved that the Millinocket Town Council and council assembled on November eleventh, twenty twenty-four, would like to, go ahead, recognize, honor, and congratulate Michael Mador for his work as a longstanding volunteer and public servant to the town.
And notice, nobody seconded it.
Oh, second.
I can.
Thank you, Paul.
But. Uh. Motion made by Council Danforth, second by Council McGowan. Uh, any, any council discussion on the proclamation? Council McGowan.
I'm not gonna say anything bad, count. No, I just wanna thank, um, just the service on the council, uh, truly is appreciated, and as I've worked with you the last year and a half, you've been an immense help to me. Took me under your wing, you were the first one who came in and showed me how to review the warrants and sign the warrants, anytime I had a question, I knew I could call you, I could email you, um, you've been a great help, you're a pleasure to work with, got a great sense of humor, and, um, and you will be missed, thank you, thank you.
Council Pellet here.
Well, I certainly agree with all that, uh, Kami said, and, uh, been with you for quite a few years.
Have that, yeah.
And, uh, maybe you taught me how to be patient with some other individuals. So I wanna thank you very much, and, uh, enjoy your retirement.
Council Higgins?
Yes. Mr. Mador. As a chair, I wanna say thank you for everything that you have taught me through this whole new experience for me. I do really appreciate it, we might not have always seen eye to eye, um, we've disagreed on a few occasions. Uh, quite a few actually, but I do appreciate everything, and good luck in your endeavors, and I appreciate everything you've done for the town.
Right, Council Mackin?
Well, I'd just like to say thank you for making this past year easier for me. You've helped me a lot, and I wish you luck.
Very much. Yeah, go ahead.
So I actually, uh, Council Dumeay, um, couldn't be here tonight, he's not feeling well, so he did send, write up something, he asked me to read it on his. So, it is rare that we, as a society, ever come across people with pure intentions, Mike Mador is one of those people. His only motive as a counselor, in my experience, is to see Millinocket succeed. For years, Mike has served his hometown in these hallowed chamber halls with the hopes of returning the community to its former glory, or painstakingly attempting to forge a new path into the future. Mike will be remembered as a treasured friend, advisor, and mentor. His institutional knowledge of municipal government is invaluable tool that will be sorely missed. His personal and family sacrifice is something to be admired and celebrated. Thank you to Mike and his family, although a simple thank you pales in comparison to what you deserve. In closing, I would be interested if I did not mention that to me, Mike's greatest accomplishment as a counselor is facilitating the potential that this town can and will become. Oftentimes, the work that has been laid in years prior will only come to fruition after a sitting councilor has left and will no longer be remembered or received the credit due to the contributions they've made. I, for one, will always remember you, my friend and colleague. I will also, when the opportunity arises in the future, when Millinocket not only survives but thrives, will give you the credit due to honor the sacrifice you've made. And personal side, side note, and personal side note, thanks for being the first person on the council to treat me as equal with kindness and compassion. I appreciate you, regards, Justin Dumeay, Council of Town.
That's right.
So. I don't have a single period, and that was really eloquent, that was covering a lot of bases, and I feel very informed to that, but it's already been, I, I, I appreciate the leadership and sitting in that chair, which in every, I don't think you missed a meeting, it's another meeting, uh, this last year.
Same old.
Yeah, you spent the time that you've been, your own, probably. Illnesses, sicknesses, not feeling so great, so, um, been a pretty kind of work, thank you for your service.
Uh, all right. Down to the public. Please.
Matt Bragdon, ninety-two Lincoln Street, I wanna give you a big thank you too. The first year that I was elected, you were one of the first people I called, because I knew you from school, I was like, oh, he has a wealth of knowledge, I'll call him. And you guided me over the course of an hour and forty-five minute conversation on how to be a counselor, proper etiquette, and, uh, the words that you gave me, I used in the three years that I was a counselor, and the three future years that I will be a counselor. So thank you for your guidance, even though we served a very short term together, your words still impacted me, and will continue to impact me from the day that I was elected, so thank you.
Very welcome. Thank you. Anyone else? Boy, just be serious, you're taking the hat off.
Well. It's a sign of respect.
Yeah, exactly, Jeff Campbell, airport manager, Mike, I wanna thank you for everything you've done, uh, the, just being the cheerleader for the airport, made me feel like the airport was a important piece of the infrastructure here. Um, you've always had my back, you've always worked through all the processes that we've ever done, so, since this became a town department, you've been there, along with the other councils, but you've been there as, as much as anybody, to help me through the process of, you know, figuring this whole thing out. So I appreciate that, Mike, thanks, and I, uh, I consider you a friend, thank you.
It was my pleasure. Yeah.
Yeah, John Remen, two thirty-six Highland Avenue, uh, I wanna thank Mike for his years of service, having, uh, sat next to him for six years of it, um, and probably during the most difficult times for town of Millinocket, we ended up having to cut three million dollars out of the budget, and it wasn't a lot of fun. And a lot of people around town, really hot, and there were some contentious times, but we made it through it, and there was a lot of laughs and, and jokes, and, and because of Mike, and we had, uh, a good time, even though it was some rough times, and, uh, you know, two terms that I did, six years that, uh, you, people don't realize the amount of time that you give up to do this job, some of them don't understand it till they get into it, and what it takes if you're gonna do a real good job as a counselor, but nobody really knows what a real good job is, because you can't satisfy everybody, but you do what you can do, and, and you've done a good job at that, and, uh, you know, enjoy your retirement. And, uh, thanks for everything you've done.
Thank you.
My.
Mr. Chairman. Sullivan is gonna handle.
Mr. Sullivan. You muted Sandy. Sandy, don't waste these words, they're very precious here, you. There we go.
I just wanna say thank you very much for all you have done for the town. On every council, they need someone who has that history of what has happened five years ago or ten years ago, and I think you and Council Pellet here, um, are the two right now that hold that position. And unfortunately, with your loss, I think it's a big loss, um, so thank you for all you have done.
Thank. Yes.
Outgoing Chairman Dorr. I know the feeling, as some others in this room do too, and especially sitting in the seat that you sit at, and have sat in more, on more than one occasion, you understand the weight it bears on you as a person. Likewise, from what's already been said. It's been a pleasure serving with you when I did, at the capacity that I did, and, uh, nice to step in and get to see you in your shining moment here tonight. Uh, Mike, as it's also been said, we also haven't agreed on things before, but we've sat down and had those tough conversations that other people were unwilling to have, and really looked at what is this place gonna look like down the road? Um, fortunate enough to work with you, and now it's time for you to kick up your feet and relax. Mrs. Sullivan said it as well, the organizational history is something that when you lose that, that's what kills organizations, is the loss of that hindsight. There will be others to replace that for you, and I know that you're not gonna just be shuttered inside, and your, your good works will come through to the community once again. And I'll leave it there, thank you for your service, Mike, and, uh, kick back, it's time to relax.
Intend to drive. Anyone else? Yes, Mr. Manager.
When, when I was hired for this position, it was a five-two vote, uh, and Mike was one of those two that voted no. Uh, and we started from there, we started from voting no to growing a very strong and healthy relationship between an elected official and an administrator, um, and, and, and then beyond that into, um, you know, a, a deeper bond of, of, um, a very real friendship later on. Through the three years that I've worked with you, I've seen transition to being open to new ideas, uh, you know, investments in areas that, um, this council had not dove headfirst into, you know, in, in prior years, um, and I I see a lot of that because of your leadership, even when you were not in the chair's role. It was obvious that you were a driving force in this group, and in, in any arrangement of it over the three years that, that I've been involved. You know, the, the communication that you bring to the table between counselors and, and making sure everybody's educated on a topic. You know, the, the internal political side of, of this. You've, you've done remarkably well on behalf of the community that you serve, and I, for one, professionally and personally, um, thank you, and will miss you, and selfishly, I hope to see your name on a future ballot.
Thank you.
I, I'm the only one here that is gonna say it, I hope that you get bored, and I hope that you run again in the future, but for now, we all understand that, uh, family is the most important, and I hope that you do keep your word and, and focus on, on your loving wife and your kids and grandkids and your family. Thank you.
One else? And it's my turn. Everybody's right. I have been here for a very long time. And each and every council that I have served with, each and every counselor that I've served with, has my undying respect. Even if we didn't agree on things, even if we had our differences. You took the time to put your name on a ballot, come here and serve, and everybody, I don't care who they have been over the course of the year, whether they agreed with me or not, have done it for love of the community. And I think more so than anything else that, that speaks volumes for the people who end up representing this town. All of them. Uh, I have had so many opportunities to work with so many great people, from my beginning to, to now, I, I, I cherish every, each and every one of you. Part of me is gonna miss this. I really would like to finish what I started, especially as of late. But, as it was reminded, my wife reminded me one day, there's always going to be the next thing, so if you don't stop now and use that excuse what happens later. And for the first time in fifteen years, my family came to me and said, we want you with us, we've shared you with the town for all this time, and now we wanna be a little selfish. And that tugged at my heartstrings more than anything else, and it told me that maybe it is time to take a break, this time more so than just for a year stepping away, but we'll see. I never say never on anything, I never say never, because it, it, it'll come back and bite you if you do. But I have enjoyed it. I love this job. And I love serving my community, and I love the people in the and these have been probably some of the best years of my life serving on this council, and I will miss it. But I see, when I see Matt come in, I see what the people that are on here now. I think town's gonna be left in good shape. I thank each one of you for your words. And Jesse, I don't know if you're listening or anything here, but, uh, you have been a, a very dear friend, patriot, sounding board that I have, there was a reason I asked you to sit right here. Because I valued your opinion, just as I do Jane's, just as I do everybody's, but just to have somebody that I knew that I Just to have somebody that I knew that I could bounce off of, much like I had when I had. Other counselors beside me. I know the town's gonna be left in good shape. This council is gonna be stronger than ever. And. Just don't lose sight of the fact that you need, the community now is in a position where it needs to move forward. We need to invest in ourselves, we need to be strong and move the town forward. Stagnant, being stagnant or trying to be. The way things were, this isn't gonna work anymore. We've got some great people in department heads. Who I think can do that, just do that in in all our different departments. We have a young manager who. I will admit, I have never been so happy to be wrong. I uh, he's absolutely right, I I wasn't in favor of. He when his name came up. And I was wrong, he has been truly the finest town manager I have ever worked with. And it has been delight to share these last few years with him. And to work with him and to develop a a working relationship with him that goes beyond the council. Uh, and if the town is really smart. And this council is a smart council. You will follow this man's lead. Into the future. Because Millinocket has a future and it is bright. And with that, I'll let it go with there and say. Alright, now let's vote on the proclamation. Bowser Higgins, what do you vote? If you say nay, so help me.
Can I disagree?
Bowser Mackin.
Hi.
Bowser Pelletier.
Hi.
Bowser Danforth.
Bowser McGowan.
Hi.
And if you can vote on your own proclamation, Chairman Adore, I. It's unanimous, thank you all very much for your kind words. Alright, and now I turn it over, oh.
Yes, we do.
I wish you would.
Sorry, I'm not there, Mike, I said my goodbyes last time.
Right now, all the funny fabulous prizes have been thrown out. Why don't you take over? I turn the, I turned it over to Matt Clark.
I'm here, I'm accepting nominations for uh.
Yeah, we just. Yeah, we have to swear on the members first. Otherwise, not to get to vote again.
We need to give him his jacket, ma'am, I'm taking it.
Alright, so. Counselor.
Supposed to study.
Now. Come on here again. I saw him swear.
Hey. You got the next one. Hold on, I'm gonna turn this over to you, by name Chairman. That's fine.
It's cherry.
No, it's okay, only I'm good.
Hey, it is now at this time that I'll take nominations for the chair.
I nominate Counselor Danforth.
Second.
Yes, I nominate Counselor Matt Bragdon for Council Chair.
Thirty seconds. Is there any other nominations? Hearing no second for Bragdon. We'll go ahead and. Motion by McGowan, second by Pelletier. All those in favor? Oh, I'm sorry.
You have to do it by voice.
Counselor, say yes. Counselor Bragden.
Hi.
Counselor Pelletier.
Hi.
That means that I'd like to read order two fifty-one to make it official.
Okay.
Um, providing for election of the town council chairman and has ordered that. The Millinocket Town Council will elect a councilor Danforth as its chairman for a one-year term commencing on November eleventh. Twenty-four and ending November twenty twenty-four, four until Assessor is duly elected.
Should that be twenty twenty-five?
Twenty twenty-five, yes.
It's the new venue, Sterling Assault.
That's my third strike. Can I have a second?
Second.
Motion by Clerk Lakeman, second by Counselor Higgins. Counselor Higgins.
Hi.
Counselor Bragden.
Hi.
Counselor Mackin.
Hi.
Chair Danforth.
Hi.
And Counselor McGowan.
Hi.
Thank you. Should we continue or wait for Counselor Pelletier?
That's your call, Madam Chairman, Chairperson, Madam Chair.
Let's take a five-minute break, take a five-minute resource, uh, recess.
Five minutes recess at seven forty-one. Managers report.
Well, make it known so that councillor Higgins knows we're there, we go.
You all set councillor Higgins, we're going to start. Resume the meeting, are you good? Town managers' report. Being none, we'll move on to order number two fifty-two dash twenty twenty-four. Councillor Pelletier, would you read that?
Order number two fifty-two twenty twenty-four. I think war acceptance of town council procedure policy. It is ordered that the town, the Millinocket Town Council read off. The town council meeting procedure policy proposed. As amended on November thirteenth. Twenty twenty-three, a copy which is attached to this order.
Second.
Motion made by councillor Pelletier, second by councillor Bragden, any comments? Any public comment? Being none, all those in favor of order number two fifty-two dash twenty twenty-four, councillor Higgins.
Aye.
Councillor Bragden.
Aye.
Councillor Macken.
Aye.
Councillor Pelletier.
Aye.
Chair Danforth. Aye. Councillor McLawland.
Aye.
Motion passes six zero. Calling, would you read order number two fifty-three dash twenty twenty-four?
Yes. Order number two fifty-three dash twenty twenty-four. Providing for FY twenty-five international program budget. It is ordered that the international program revenue budget of forty-nine thousand nine hundred and thirty dollars and expense budget. Of forty-nine thousand nine hundred and thirty dollars be approved. And it is further ordered that any fund balance will transferred. To the school department's operating budget at the end of the fiscal year. And it is further ordered that the town of Millinocket's town treasurer. Is authorized to accept and expend funds related to the approved international program budget. To the extent that the funds are available. By September first, twenty twenty-four. And throughout FY twenty-five to cover the program expenses.
Second.
Motion made by councillor McLawland, seconded by councillor Higgins. Any council comment? And the public comment? Back to the council for a vote. How do you vote? Um, councillor Higgins.
Aye.
Councillor Bragden.
Aye.
Councillor Macken.
Aye.
Councillor Pelletier.
Aye.
Chair Danforth. Aye. Councillor McLawland.
Aye.
Uh, motion passes six zero. Councillor Bragden, can I have your order number two fifty-four dash twenty twenty-four?
Order number two fifty-four dash twenty twenty-four. Is providing for approval of the snowmobile trail maintenance grant. Application to the main department of conservation. It is ordered that the approval. Is granted to submit the twenty twenty-fourth dash twenty twenty-five application. For main department of conservation snowmobile program municipal grant in aid agreement. The application requested a total of four hundred and seventeen thousand, six hundred and twenty-four dollars. And seventy-one cents in state funds that are supplemented by local slash private funds. Of ninety-three thousand, two hundred and sixty-seven dollars and seventy-four cents. For a total project cost of three hundred and ten thousand, eight hundred and ninety-two dollars and forty-five cents. In addition to this, the town of Millinocket will pay Twin Pines Snowmobile Club. Eleven thousand, two hundred and sixty-seven dollars and eighty-five cents. And Northern Timber Cruisers Snowmobile Club, three thousand, seven hundred and thirty-two dollars. And fifteen cents to assist with grooming. It is further ordered that the town manager is authorized to sign and execute any and all agreements necessary to receive this grant.
Second.
Motion made by councillor Bragden, seconded by councillor Higgins. Any council comment? Any public comment?
Good evening, folks, again. Cody McQ and Recreation Director for the town of East Millinocket, Millinocket. Um, so this is an annual grant that. I now administer on behalf of the municipality. Um, I also administer this on behalf of East Millinock municipality. There are five snowmobile clubs incorporated into this grant program. Two of which, um, are on this Millinock Municipal's application. So this is a grant. Aid for, and actually. I think all of the councillors are, should, may be familiar with this grant. Um, at this point in time, but for recap, um, this is a reimbursement style grant. It's a seventy-thirty split. Um, so the clubs, uh, on where it says that local private share, that is actually the clubs that come up with that money. For their trail maintenance. Uh, the state aid is really. The grant reimbursement up to expenditures, so that is what is available for the clubs to tap into. Um, they can go up to that full amount. Um, but they can't go over that. The municipality acts as that pass-through mechanism for the grants. To be facilitated and is really a contingency, um, for the state. So we do this as a service. For these clubs. Um, there's also a second part for these two clubs in particular, um, where the town of Millinocket. Actually allocates a portion of their budget to assist in the offset. Um, of those private local funds that they have to, um, put up themselves when it comes to trail maintenance. And a part of that is trail maintenance within the town of Millinocket and adjacent trails. Um, that connect to those major routes, the ITS. Something that. I will be bringing up to the next coun- council budget session. Is actually to increase that town share portion. Um, something that should be really known. About this program. Is the total grant program actually between. Really Abimi and Medway, which is administered. You guys currently only have Twin Pines and, uh, the Northern Timber Cruisers on your package. Uh, but that actual combined package is well over six hundred and ten thousand dollars. Uh, now seventy-thirty split. It's actually around four hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars probably from state funds. That go into these clubs from essentially Brownville to Medway. Without this grant program. These clubs would not be able to perform the amount of maintenance that they could on the dollars that they really don't have. Uh, this is an essential grant program. Um, as that cost increase, the capital cost has increased for the demand of grant resources. That fifteen thousand dollar mark hasn't really changed in many years, which actually. Pushes that percentage cost share down. From what is actually able to help the clubs out. Um, it's been brought up before. But. I think now more than ever, it's time we might need to look into that as a municipality. Um, as a second, and I'm, I'll open up to any questions from the council. Um, geographically, working with the state. Um, East Millinocket currently has on their grant package, Joe Mary Riders and Abimi Snowmobile Club. Um, geographically, it actually and county-wise makes a little bit more sense to have us have them on the Millinocket's package. And for the public's concern too, uh, regardless of the size of this grant package, no taxpayer dollars go into the funding. Of this, aside from the fifteen thousand dollars that is allocated from the town budget. So when you hear these three hundred thousand dollars, these six hundred thousand dollars. A lot of this is funds from the state to these clubs. We're just merely the passer that makes that happen to them. Um, so with that, all being said, I hope that was a good recap and some education if you aren't aware of this snowmobile grant program. We also do an ATV grant program similar in the spring that only incorporates, um, a few clubs instead of the five that we currently administer. I currently administer on behalf of the municipalities in the state. Um, with that. Are there any questions from the council that you have for me?
Councillor Bragden.
So you're, then you said we're going to be potentially bringing on two more squads.
E. A short answer is yes.
Okay, is the projected cost an additional fifteen thousand dollars or is it?
No, I, I actually, you know, I think a part of that contribution, the fifteen thousand dollars is because the clubs that. That is administered to are, um, are really even adjacent, either within the township or adjacent directly to the township in those main trail corridors or. The direct feeds within the town and some of the local more regional networks. Um, granted, Joe Mary Riders and Abimi, um. Depending you could, which way you could say it. Their trails that are groomed and maintained lead to our trails up here. Uh, the Northern Timber Cruisers, um, has established the east-west trail system. So you could also say that. Medway, um, East Branch Snow Rovers, they're using those trails to come through here, but I think at this time, it's probably in the best interest of the budget and the councils, just to keep that allocated towards the two clubs. Regardless of having those other clubs, Abimi and Joe Mary Riders on our application, it doesn't, it wouldn't affect one. The tax base or cost of that and two, I don't think it would be. Uh, an appropriate allocation of funds. That's from my perspective administering the whole, whole program. I've actually had a light conversation with one of the clubs about that very thing. Um, just going over the contracts and how it all looks. Some of the contracts have just been also updated as well, just. For grant management sake.
Awesome, thank you.
Yep.
I appreciate the certification. The town share there. All I wanted to do is make a comment in order to avoid long discussion on the subject.
Yeah.
I look forward to seeing you at budget time.
Absolutely, and I just want to get that out ahead of time, just so you can understand some of the numbers where things have gone. And I'll be prepared to provide. Uh, math backups and projections on how those numbers have trended over time and why I brought that up. Thank you.
Uh, thank you, Cody. Snowmobile was a big part of our winter economy, so we all got to think snow, right?
Like I said, not until my wood is in the basement, then absolutely, let's bring it on, but thank you.
Any other comments?
Thank you, John Raymond, two thirty-six Highland Avenue and President of the Northern Timber Cruisers. Uh, I want to thank Cody for jumping onto this, this year and, uh. Getting us all involved with this. Uh, just a little bit of information. As, uh, some of you know, the past year was, wasn't that great for snowmobiling? Uh, not just with, because of the l- loss of snow. But because of the damage that they had, uh. According to the, uh, Snowmobile Division, uh, Joe Higgins said that they're about three million dollars short. On repairing bridges and stuff on the trails in the lower part of the state and in, and in some areas around here. But then they also, last year, because of the short snowfall. Their registrations were down almost twenty-one thousand sleds. So you couple that together, it's about a six million shortfall. Just the snowmobile side. And in ATVing, it's a ninety-ten split on municipal grant, whereas snowmobile, it's a seventy-thirty. So the club's going to come up with thirty percent opposed to the, as was, uh, ni- uh, ninety-ten on the ATV side. So a little bit more of a requirement there and then it usually is done through in-kind and stuff like that. But some of the things that all the clubs are running into, as you guys all well aware of, uh, costs for, for fuel. The, uh, you know, diesel costs and these, these machines are burning a lot of diesel. So. Stuff like this will help the clubs. To offset some of that cost because. It's like anything, you build a budget, but if we get a lot of snow, then there's a lot of extra costs and this grant that, that, uh. They, that was put in, you're not always guaranteed you're going to get that amount. They're going to, the state's going to look at it and say, okay, you put in three hundred thousand, we approve a hundred and seventy. So now the c- club's going to kind of, you know, I'll figure out how they're going to try to get through this winter. So fuel costs and the, and the maintenance costs is what we really don't know what's going to happen. Because we're an all-volunteer club, it doesn't cost us anything to, to do the work. So that's the, that's the benefit of it. But this money that the town gives helps the club though. And I believe last year, I, I, I did, uh, talk to Pete about, um, possible increase on it and, and at the time we were talking about doubling it. But I think if we were to take and just increase it like five a year for a few years and try to get it up there, it would help. And. Like I said, not knowing what the, we're going to have for weather is the unknown and. Now on the ATV side, the new trail open and the activity we're getting on that, it's going to help offset some of that, so. Just want to bring you up to date on that and we'll do what we can do on our end and thank you for supporting the clubs and helping us with these municipal grants.
Any other public comment? Back to the council for a vote. Order number two fifty-four. How do you vote councillor Higgins?
Aye.
Councillor Bragden.
Aye.
Councillor Bragden. Councillor Pelletier.
Aye.
Councillor Danforth. Chair Danforth. Aye, councillor McLawland.
Aye.
Motion passes six zero. Um, councillor McLawland. Can I have you read order number two fifty-one?
Order number two fifty-five dash twenty twenty-four, providing for authorization of municipal quitclaim deed for fifty Heritage Street. It is ordered that the Millinocket Town Council authorizes the town manager to sign, execute and file all necessary paperwork related to the attached municipal quitclaim deed. Transferring any and all right title and interest in. And to fifty Heritage Street tax map. U fourteen lot seventy, as shown on the tax maps of Millinocket Maine to William Patrick Burke.
Second.
Um, motion made by councillor McLawland, seconded by councillor Higgins. Any council comment? Any public comment? Being none, back to the council for a vote. Councillor Higgins.
Aye.
Councillor Bragden.
Aye.
Councillor Macken.
Aye.
Councillor Pelletier.
Aye.
Chair Danforth. Aye, councillor McLawland.
Aye.
Motion passes six zero. Down to reports and communications, uh, War Committee. Any chair committee reports?
Yes. At the moment, I'm the chair of the town, of the, um. Eight from the meeting and we have a meeting on Tuesday. That would be tomorrow at two PM at the library and, uh, uh, attending for that is posted as easily.
Any public, we're down to two-minute public comment. Anybody in the public who can make a comment?
In John Raymond, two thirty-six Highland Avenue, I just wanted to, uh, see if I could get on the next meeting to give you an update on. The new trail and what's cut down and what it costs and all this stuff and. And I've got trail counters out there that are giving us a count what's going on, so I can bring you up to date what's happening there and I kind of wait until we get through. Election and everything, so.
Thank you, Mr. Manager, would you?
I. Can't give you the next meeting, but I can give you the first one in December.
Works for me.
Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Bragden, do you have public comments?
I wanted to wish a very happy birthday to the Marine Corps. Their birthday was yesterday. And, uh, a thank you to all veterans that served. Anywhere in the United States and particularly to those that served in our community. You gave the ultimate sacrifice to some. And I appreciate everything you've done for this country. Thank you.
Any other public comments? I will, uh. Entertain a motion to adjourn.
Don't move.
Second. Motion made by councillor Pelletier, seconded by councillor McLawland. All those in favor, councillor Higgins.
Aye.
Councillor Bragden.
Aye.
Councillor Macken.
Aye.
Councillor Pelletier.
Aye.
Councillor McLawland. Hi. Chair Danforth, hi. Motion passes zero. We are adjourned.
Thank you.